The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our April Board meeting. I'd like to start things off with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Okay, let's try this again. Smith. Here. Vanden Hoewel.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Clayton and Warren.
Yeah.
All right, six board members are present. Trustee Becker should be here momentarily. With that said, I would look for a motion to convene into closed session.
I move that the Board of Education convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, more specifically to wit potential involvement in class action litigation and pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen eight five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific business, public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit, negotiation of collective bargaining agreements pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen eight five one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to wit employee compensation.
There a second?
Second.
All right, Beth.
Smith. Hi. Vanden Hoewel.
Hi.
Warren.
Hi.
Clayton and Warren.
Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
Welch.
Hi.
All right, motion passed six zero. We will convene in closed session. We'll see everyone back at six o'clock. And good evening once again to everyone as we reconvene in open session for our April Board meeting. We'll start with roll call. Beth, can you help us with that, please?
Becker.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Vanden Hoewel.
Here.
Clayton and Warren.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. We will move on. Oh, excuse me, before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, just point out that we are joined by our superintendent Steve Merly, along with members of his cabinet. We are also joined by two members of our inner-city Student Council. Braden Freeburg, Vice President of the Inner-City Student Council from Southwest, as well as Elise Williams, also from Southwest High School. Trojans well represented tonight. Thank you guys for joining us. All right, and with that said, we will go to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then we'll go on to our mission statement, which will be read tonight by Laura Layton and Warren.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
All right, thank you, Laura. And then finally, under opening activities, we have listed our collaborative commitments. This is a list of statements that are posted to the agenda that the Board created about two years ago now, and how we want to conduct ourselves and carry out our work on the school board, and they are there for your reference. All right, carrying on into open forum, first item is our Inner-City Student Council report, and I will hand that over to Braden and Elise.
Well, thank you for letting us do a report. I would just be quickly doing this. All right, so we had a bunch of good news that we shared with each other yesterday. Preble is had a Deca meet, and their cross-country meets are going well, and they met, they won two meets, which is really nice. Okay, yeah, Southwest, three people went to state forensics, and a lot of people are excited about our choir having an actual in-person concert this time. Everyone's loving that. We've also won a cross-country meet as well. East had a cover design for their yearbook. They're having a contest. They didn't have it. They're going to have it. And they also having their musical happening. So I think I might go see that because we're not having our musical happen this year. Well, it'll be online, or will it already happen? Students went to state for, oh my gosh, my phone is not behaving, FBLA. And three students from, yeah, three students went. And East FFA is also having a blood drive. West decided to not show up, and J-Doll rescheduled the event night, and they have a new video on their website to go check out, and their school apparel, they are going to have in their school store. They are having apparel finally in their, in their school store, which is really nice.
Anything else?
No, unless you guys have questions.
All right, thank you so much for the update. We appreciate it. And then last on the open forum was public forum, and I don't believe we had anybody that was registered to speak for tonight. So that carries us through to our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like removed for discussion? Go ahead, Nancy.
Well, I don't want anything to be pulled off, but I would just like to acknowledge the debt payment made in March of seventeen point eight million dollars. That's really an incredible amount, and it's such a good job to the people who made that happen.
Absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. Appreciate that. All right, without seeing any other comments, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Opposed? All right, and the consent agenda is approved six to zero. All right, then carrying that on to presentations, legislative update, state budget hearings, and that will be given tonight by Brenda Warren.
Thanks, Eric. So the budget hearings have started. There was one in UW-Whitewater last week, and then there's two upcoming on the twenty-first and twenty-second. Those are both in-person budget hearings. And then they're having also a virtual budget hearing on Wednesday, April twenty-eighth, which is what we're planning to attend. And they're limiting the speakers to two hundred for the virtual, and they expect that to fill up pretty quickly. Right now, we're hoping to get Steve Merly and me and Claudia Hendrickson signed up. And and we will lobby for a number of things in the budget that would be beneficial to our, to our district. And the, in, in the governor's budget, there was increased special education, EL, bilingual education, and mental health funding. One of the things that's been tossed around a little bit is some of the legislators are talking about decreasing the state monies based on how many days your kids were in in-person school. And so there, so we will be lobbying to continue the, well, actually, and that was for the federal funds coming in. So we will lobby for, obviously, you know, our, the state funding and the federal funds that are, that are supposed to come to us. Obviously, we've spent a lot of that money on this year, but we have a lot of things that are coming in the next year or two that, that we'll want to have that money available so that we can do some extra programs and things in terms of helping kids with their learning. Another thing that's been tossed around is the idea that the if we get all the federal money, maybe we don't need our state funding and dropping the state funding, so we will also lobby for that for the same reason I just mentioned. And then the improved access to internet, that seems to be the one topic that I think the Republicans are, have already said they're in favor of. And then also, as you recall, we were increasing, we've been a below-average spending district, and we've been able to increase our budget to get to average. So that's another item that we'll be talking about in our, in our testimony. We only get two minutes, so we have to talk fast, efficiently, but we'll try to cover what we can in that. Are there any questions? Oh, the other thing is, we also are planning to have some local, some meetings with our local legislators in addition to testifying to the Joint Finance Committee. Yeah.
Where would those meetings take place, or haven't you decided yet?
Um, they're not scheduled yet. I mean, it could just be a Zoom meeting. Yeah, we were talking about doing it that way. That actually opens up scheduling possibilities for them too, because normally we're, you know, limited to Mondays and Fridays when they're in town. We could possibly schedule something when they're down in Madison too. But yeah, Lori Blanksley was going to be looking into that. If there are no other questions, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Brenda. All right, two items for discussion tonight. The first is the report of canvassers as a result of the latest school board election, and I believe I'll hand it over to Laura McCoy, who is our board clerk.
Thank you, Eric. So I'm just going to read the certification of the Board of Canvassers. We, the undersigned, certify that we are members of the Board of Canvassers for the Green Bay Area Public School District. We certify that the attached tabular statement of votes cast and summary statement of the Board of Canvassers canvassed and prepared by us are correct and true as compiled from the Green Bay Area Public School District Deputy Clerk. We further determine and certify that the following persons received the greatest and the next-to-greatest number of votes for the respective office for which each was a candidate on April sixth, twenty twenty-one. So I'm just going to read the names and the votes that were the amount of votes in descending order. Nancy Welsh, eight thousand seven hundred seventy-four votes. Andrew Becker, seven thousand six hundred and thirty-seven votes. Brian Mills, seven thousand fifty-seven votes. Rhonda Sitnikow, six thousand five hundred and nine votes. And that's been duly signed. And that's it.
All right, thank you. I'll use this opportunity to congratulate Andrew on his reelection and congratulate Nancy on her election to her first term. While Nancy is here with us today, officially, her term starts at our next meeting, but glad that you were able to join us and excited about the work that we have together in front of us in the coming year.
Um, and maybe this would be a good time to do give our sincere thank you to Rhonda Sitnikow for her years of service on our board. Three years, and I'm not sure exactly how many, but one full term and part of another. So I think it'd be a good idea to just thank her, her service.
Absolutely. So thank you to Rhonda and also to Brian for putting his name out there and the work that he put in and willingness to serve our district.
We had four very strong candidates.
Absolutely. All right, then we'll transition then to our last discussion item, which is GBAPs forward. Two items there, Esser Funding and Fall twenty-one, twenty-two, and with that, I'll hand it to Superintendent Merly.
Thank you very much. You'll see in the attachment there that on the first page, you'll see a summary of the funds that have been allocated to the Green Bay Area Public School District under three different streams under the Esser Funding. So you may be more familiar with some of the terms, the CARES Act or the GIRS funding that came to us under Esser one. And you can see the totals down there, four lines down, approximately five million dollars from CARES one, approximately three million dollars from GIRS. As you move over to the right, the third column from the left shows you the C-R-R-S-A-A. There's lots of different ways to try to spell that or pronounce that acronym, but that's our second round of Esser Funding, and that totals nineteen point nine million dollars. And then the new number that I have for you today is in the far-right-hand column, and that's the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. And the district has been allocated forty-four point seven million dollars. If you go back up on the second row, you can see the dates of expenditure. You may ask why September thirtieth shows up in each of those. Remember that the federal budget starts on October first and runs until September thirtieth of the following year. These are federal dollars, so they follow the federal expenditure guidelines so that you can see that those dollars that come to us in, in the first round need to be expended by September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two, in the second round by September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three, and in the last, the ARPA funds, September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. The intention of this document is you'll see this on a quarterly basis. As you flip through the next set of pages, you'll see all of the areas in which those dollars can be expended. You may note that there are some cells in there that say not allowable, and the language in the different acts provides some opportunities to spend in other, some areas and not in others. The intention behind this is to make sure that you, as board members and the general public, can follow along with us as we progress through the expenditure of funds in these three areas. And we will again report to you on a quarterly basis, monies that have been expended and monies that are obligated moving forward. Right now, our accounting department is working to reverse-enter all the dollars from CARES and GIRS. So the next time you see that, you will see all the dollars that have been expended in those that are obligated under that first round. The next step in the process for us is we're convening focus groups internally so that we can start to talk with our administrative team and our teachers about the areas in which funds can be expended and start to gather ideas from them about things that they think will have the greatest return for our students. When we've gathered that information, we will compile that. We'll be sharing that with the board so that collectively we can make determinations about where these dollars should be allocated. And again, we have intermittent periods of time where we'll be able to expend that. We'll work to expend those dollars from the earlier categories first, again, recognizing that in many of those categories, you could spend out of each of those three pots, and so we'll work to spend our first round down, then our second round, then our third round. And again, the goal here is to be very planful about this over the course of the next three years so that we can meet as many needs as possible for the students and so that we can set up a plan that is responsive to our end-users in the classrooms and allows the board to have the dialogue and input necessary to make sure that we're transparent with the general public. So we wanted to share this with you just as an intro, let you know where things stand right now. What we see is next steps in the process. Certainly welcome any questions that you may have about where we're going and how we should get there.
Steve, I think, you know, one of the things that we know, these are one-time funds, so I think you and your team are having conversations about making sure we're not investing in things that would create long-term costs that then would have to go away when the funds would go away. Is that correct?
That's correct. So I'll give you a couple of examples that might help you contextualize it. So we know that we've got our work cut out for us in this next summer school. And so you heard the report, I think, two meetings ago now, about some of the expanded efforts that we're planning for summer school. We recognize with these dollars that we can look to enhance our summer school programming for the summers of twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, and those dollars could then fall within an acceptable expenditure pattern for our federal support dollars, recognizing that we get to the summer of twenty-four, I'm sorry, the summer of twenty-five, rather, after that last round, we would have to scale back our summer school program or find an additional funding source for it, but that would be something that we would be able to spend dollars in and not be obligated as we move forward beyond that.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Laura.
So we just voted to hire a slate of new of new employees, and four of those are mental health supports. Will any of that be able to be paid for with any of these funds, or are those going to be long-term? I mean, can any of those funds be used for that?
The answer to your question is yes and no, in the sense that there's a great deal of flexibility in what we could spend our money on. What we'll want to do is we'll want to make sure that in particular with personnel, if they're long-term hires for us, we'll want to work that into our normal funding process for personnel. But we also recognize in the case of mental health personnel that over the course of the next couple of years, we may need some additional staff on hand. So we could certainly allocate some of those dollars into one of the CARES funding sources.
Any other questions on the expenditures here? All right.
So again, thank you, and like I said, we will, we'll get this updated with dollars that have already been spent, so you can see which categories those are spent in, and then we will report back to you at least quarterly as we look to keep you and the public informed on where those dollars are going.
All right, and then transitioning to Fall twenty-one, twenty-two.
I had the opportunity right before we came into the Board meeting to go on the air. I know that there have been questions in the community over the course of the past couple of months about what does the future look like? And we want to reassure the public again that the Board has adopted a calendar for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year that has our teachers coming back in August and our students coming back in September. That's predicated on a five-day week, just as we have had in person in previous years. It includes those early-out days as they previously been scheduled. One of the things that I think may have given some pause and may have caused people to ask questions, we will be offering a pre-K to five virtual program for children whose families wish to keep them online to start next fall. That will be separate from our in-person physical school, and that will create an opportunity for those students to be in that program, stay in that program over the course of the year, but won't have any impact on our classrooms, in particular, our in-person classrooms. That opportunity is already in place at the secondary level right now through the John Dewey Academy of Learning, so those children that wish to do that at the secondary grade six, eight, and nine, twelve have the opportunity to do it through J-Doll. So our intent is to start the next school year based on the calendar that the Board has adopted to be in-person for that five-day-week weekly schedule for students with the schedule of breaks and early-outs that the Board's already adopted.
Go ahead, Andrew.
So I had thought that maybe there was going to be a motion here because there's people who are looking for clarity and are very concerned. I mean, I'm frankly, I'm worried that people are making a decision now whether to leave the district or not, or attempt to leave the district based on whether or not they have a hard commitment. And obviously, a hard commitment is based on, you know, yes, we could have, we could have to change the things when the wrong direction with the pandemic, but people are getting vaccinated, people are people are doing a pretty good job. Our COVID levels for the municipalities in the district still remain better than the surrounding county, although it's close. So for the, I guess I was just surprised not to see a motion here.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about that. I mean, certainly, we've adopted the calendar. We've said it publicly many times. If there's a desire, if it's a good public will to, to make a motion, if that's a desire that you have or that we certainly can put that for action at the May Board meeting. Didn't put it on here tonight because we were going to give this update. We obviously put it on the agenda to reinforce it, but if you feel like making a motion would be taking it a step further, we certainly can reaffirm the Fall calendar.
Well, it probably would be, but it's, it's going to be too late because people have made that decision by then. So I guess a different question I would ask is so at some point, we voted on a calendar for next year? And I guess maybe it asks Melissa to jump in. Is our, is our vote on that calendar for next year binding as a traditional five-day-a-week calendar unless we were to make an additional change, or could someone argue that until there's a motion, we haven't changed it?
For the calendar that you've adopted for twenty-one, twenty-two?
Correct. So there's dates on it and off-days and start-of-school, end-of-school. But we had something similar for this year as well, but we modified the instructional days. So am I correct if I tell someone that we made binding commitment to a calendar that would require a new motion and vote to be anything other than five days a week? Or is that not necessarily accurate until we were to do that with a motion? Because I don't know that there was a sunset on any of our things that we, any of our changes that we made.
So I think we may be talking two different things, because we are in school five days a week this year. It's four days of in-person instruction and one day of the virtual instruction on Wednesdays. So the, the calendar that you've adopted for next year has five days a week of instruction as well. We've never had a calendar where we have specified virtual versus in-person instruction. So if that's what you're looking for, Andrew, I think you would need a subsequent motion to specify what that would look like, but you know, any other year when we've adopted a calendar, it has been instruction for that five days a week.
Of course. So yeah, I guess it's unfortunate that there's no motion here, and I hope I will, I hope people won't make decisions based on saying, sorry, there's no binding commitment for next fall. I'm going to make my own. I will certainly encourage people to not do that. I have, I have told people who have asked me that barring, barring a substantial change for the worse in the pandemic, that in my individual opinion, as an independent elected official, I absolutely expected us to be back five days. And that, but I guess I, I don't know what to say about there being a district decision because there isn't an end date to the four-day-a-week system.
Yeah, I mean, I see your point, Andrew. I mean, we've said, I think now this is the third board meeting in a row where whether Steve or, you know, I have said, I know, and probably others, that we will be back five days a week. Steve has said it publicly, I know, on multiple news outlets. You know, if we were to make a motion, if people felt better about that, there's, I'm not saying this is the case, but hypothetically, we could make a motion to go to three days a week. We could change that, right? So a motion might look good in the moment, but we could make another motion to change that. So a motion in itself wouldn't necessarily be binding or prevent us from doing something else, which is why, you know, ultimately, didn't make a motion for today, but again, put it on the agenda to reiterate five days a week in the fall. That's what we're planning. That's what we're going towards, and so that was the rationale. If you, people hopefully can hear that, can If you, people hopefully can hear that, can can feel confident that that's what we're planning going forward with the calendar that has been adopted of five days in person. If you would like us, whether it's too late or not to put that to reinforce our calendar at the May meeting. Would be happy to do that if if it provided even more peace of mind than us saying multiple times publicly at the board table and elsewhere. That we plan to be in person five days a week.
Yeah, I guess it's just, it's just like, you know, and it's not, this isn't just. You know, Becker wanting, I mean, sometimes it's Becker wants a motion, that sometimes I do. This time it's really people asking me, you know, where's, you know. Can you just, you know, it's, one thing a motion does, right, is it's, we can't. It would say that we can't default start four days a week next year. The start is five and we'd have to do a new motion if there was some change in COVID to put us to four. So I guess I, I guess I'd like to request that for for me. And. Possibly, you know, possibly even do a special rate before to there's, aren't there some things that still aren't complete? For transferring out before, like after, in May, it's already all done, right? But if we added it to the twenty fourth? Or is it still all done?
That open enrollment window, is that what you're looking at? Yeah, so they've already completed that.
I guess the. I guess the regular meeting in May, I think, would be an important place to to put that. So we're making it official and then if we, if something changes between then, we're making, we clearly have to make a new motion. And people could lobby their board members accordingly in either directions.
So we'll, we'll put on then the the May board meeting, the the calendar that will reattach that, that people have it accessible. And we'll just make sure that everyone can see that.
Eric, if I may, maybe just one thing that might help people if they're trying to understand this better. Remember that the reason that we have students in four days a week and that Wednesday is a virtual day. Is that our teachers have children who are both online and in person. And that Wednesday day is the bridge day that allows them to do their cross curricular planning with their teams and meet individually. With students, both the in person and the off site students. And so that's, and I apologize, I should have been more clear at the beginning there. That's why I was emphatic about the fact that there is an online option that is separate from the in person option. So we do not plan to have any teachers that will have students who are both onsite and in person. As we move into the next school year. And so because of that, we wouldn't have that need that we have right now to do the four and one. We would be able to have that five for both, both sets of students, either those who are online or those who are in person. So I apologize for not being clear about that.
No, that's, I appreciate that. And I think also important to point out that that wasn't the primary model that was recommended by you and your team. That was feedback from people in the public to board members saying, we don't want children to have to change teachers mid year. Restructure the plan. And so that's the reason why we landed where we did, which is then resulting in teachers teaching separate groups of kids. Which then requires Wednesdays for that support day for another group of kids, so.
So one other, one other question I have, did we, did we explore doing anything above and beyond J D L? If families wanted to remain virtual?
Yes, we're looking at secondary, both the middle school and the high school option. It was from a planning standpoint, it was much more straightforward for us to get that elementary program up and off the ground. We also knew that the J D O L option was available for the secondary students. So it wasn't as pressing as getting the elementary program up and rolling. But that is the next step for us in that process.
Because you expect that all elementary grades, if a family wants to do that, will be. That it would be available for all elementary grades, something?
That's correct. Pre K to five would be available starting in the fall. And then our next step in the planning process is grade six, eight at the middle level and nine, twelve at the high school.
So right now, is there, I know part of the thing with J D L is just space and and J D L is an excellent program. My worry was just are we going to exhaust the spaces? So did, has that been over applied for? Or is it, I mean, because if, if the number of people fits within what the existing J D L program can handle, it's not a problem. But if it's more than that, then we'll need a, either to modify J D L's charter or do something else.
That's a great question, Andrew. We're actually in the process of moving some of our N E W classes out to the N W T C campus. So we've been out there, the N W T C team has been fantastically accommodating. So we already have classrooms that are designated for our students. So we'll be moving those students off our campus at Cherry Street there in the fall. And that should free up some additional room for us.
I meant online room though, in the J D L online.
Right, so. Right, we look at the the space that the students need onsite for support as part of that. So that'll create the room for us to expand that program if we need to do that.
Don, did you, you're good. All right, go ahead, Brenda.
Right now, the J D L online program is a blended program. And I think the students are required to come in, I don't know what the, once a week or something like that. Will our all virtual kids, I mean, will that be continued to be a requirement for the secondary kids? Or will we have an option where the kids are actually a hundred percent virtual?
Good question. So right now, at the secondary level, the program at John Dewey would be the program that we could have available in the fall. Then the next step in our online process will be to plan for a fully online middle school and high school option. So we won't have that available in the fall, but that's the next step in our planning process. So that eventually we'd have a full pre K to twelve online continuum.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, so I guess my concern about that, if we're, if we are limited. If, I mean, if we have to, if we have to tell people no to space for a six, twelve virtual who want it. That's even more people leaving the district, unless you're saying that we could make the motions to expand Dewey's charter enough to cover however many would want it.
Yes, that's the intention. So part of freeing up the space at Cherry Street gives us the option, if necessary, to be able to enroll additional students in that program.
Go ahead, Laura.
Steve, when do you anticipate the K through twelve online? Like, what's the timeline on that? Do you have a kind of a ballpark?
Ideally, we'd like to have that available the next school year. So if you were a fifth grade student and you happen to enroll this year in the online program and you were looking to matriculate then. We'd be ready to receive you as a sixth grader the following year.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, great. Thank you very much, Steve. That takes us into action items. We have three items tonight. Brenda will read those motions. First is school security drill. And before we take that motion, I just want to point out, if you're following along, there is nothing available for public content. There is a document that's available for board members to review. The reason that it's not available is because it contains sensitive information about each individual school and their plans. So nothing available under public comment, but the board members have been able to review that information. So before we made that, I just wanted to point that out and I'll hand it over to Brenda.
I move that pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section one eighteen point zero seven four C P. The written drill evaluation submitted by the principals from all district schools as reviewed be accepted.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Beth, we're ready to vote online.
Great, all of the online votes are in. Thank you, Laura. The results of the votes are as follows. If anyone will, yes, Smith, yes, Becker, yes, Warren, yes, McCoy, yes, Leighton and Warren, yes.
All right, and the motion passes six, zero. And we'll move on to trust and custody agreement.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the adoption of the Wisconsin O P E B trust and custody agreement. Create the Fund seventy three employee benefit trust. Appoint B M O Harris Bank N A as trustee and custodian. And authorize the superintendent or his designate to carry out all related obligations.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Beth, we're ready to vote.
All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Passes six, zero. And Brenda, you want to do the last one as well?
I move that the Board of Education authorize the adoption of the investment advisory agreement. Appoint P M A Financial Networks as the investment advisor for the district's Fund seventy three employee benefit trust. And authorize the superintendent or his designate to carry out all related obligations.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Beth.
Have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, motion carries six, zero.
Eric?
Yes, who said that? Oh, you did.
This might be a good time to just remind anyone who's watching that part of the reason why there isn't a lot of discussion on these is that we had discussion on them already. And we're just voting on them now. Sometimes it looks like we're just piling through these things. But we've, we've had presentations and we've had discussion and now we're just officially voting on them.
Very good. Thank you for pointing that out. All right, last thing on our agenda then tonight is agenda setting and looking at the board meeting schedules. We do have a work session scheduled for April twenty sixth. I believe we'll also be posting a special board meeting that day for the election of of board officers before that meeting. And then our May tenth regular meeting, are there any specific agenda items other than what we've already discussed for any of those meetings? Go ahead, Andrew.
Did we say June regular meeting for the class size? Or it's on, it is on the main? April twenty sixth with for work session and then. And then something could be voted on and. So work session, yes, but then it's, it could then be, it would then be added for, could be added for a vote on May tenth.
Yes, it could be. Okay.
And we also added another request that had come through is the to revisit the school time, start time task force. So that is also on the April twenty sixth agenda.
Steve, it's been a while since we talked about that, so. Will we get a refresher?
Yes, we will, because remember, I'll need a refresher because that predates my time here in Green Bay. So we'll have a refresher for that, but that was a request that came through at the last board meeting was to get that back out there so that we could revisit it and determine what the appropriate next steps are.
All right. Not seeing any other comments, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All in favor? Hi, opposed? All right, passes six, zero, and that is the end of our April regular board meeting. Thank you. We'll see you in a few weeks.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, W W W dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five. Or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.